Sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, it is now nine oh two Monday, December seventh. This, uh, meeting is now open. Uh, we'll call, start with item number one, discuss take action, authorizing the Fairview Cemetery Supervisor to disinter remains from one plot and reinter remains to another plot within the cemetery. And I believe with this item, we have a member of the public who is wanting to speak. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you hear us, Your Honor?
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, that was correct.
Okay. So if you would like to, if you have some comments you'd like to make, we'd love to hear from you.
Terry, I visited with the family last week, and I think they want to wait till we come out of executive session, but they're obviously welcome to talk now if they'd like to.
Okay, alright. Would you prefer to wait until we discuss it and then?
They're asking if y'all have any comments to what's going to happen before we actually want to wait till they bring it out on court.
If they could, um, when they do speak, if they could give their names, uh, for the record, thank you.
Oh, okay. Just bring it out. I think, uh, I think we prefer, you know, uh, to ask questions if we have any and tell y'all bring it out on court.
Okay, alright, that'll be great. With that, if it's okay, call.
Am I?
Approximately seven items, and then we'll be going into executive session on all seven items at once. Russell, is that okay if I do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. I've called item number one, item, uh, be calling item thirty-nine, discuss take action. And Sanchez Mortician Services in obtaining larger storage cooler. Item number forty-seven, conduct executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one, point zero-seven-two-six to deliberate business and financial issues relating to a contract being negotiated. Item number forty-eight, conduct executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one to consult with attorney, county attorney regarding pending and prospective litigation and other matters. Also under Personnel Matters, item number sixteen, discuss and take action on facilities, director application and interviews. Item number forty-five, discuss take action on pre-trial supervisor application and interviews. Item number forty-nine, conduct executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one, point zero-seven-four to discuss personnel matters. So with that, we will be-
Judge, I'm sorry, if I can interrupt, um, before we go into executive session, item number forty-seven, which is the executive session item, to discuss to deliberate business and financial issues relating to contract being negotiated. Um, this, this is in reference to, excuse me, um, items number, uh, thirty-five and thirty-six. And this one specific, uh, type of executive session item, uh, requires that before we go into executive session, the, the court unanimously vote that discussing it in open court could detrimentally affect our negotiating position. I'm, as county attorney advising you that it could, uh, discussing the, these, uh, issues regarding the contracts in open court before they're discussed in the executive session could affect your, uh, negotiating position. So I just need to, we need to find into that effect.
Okay. Second motion, that, uh, we, we discuss items thirty-five and thirty-six concerning agreement with Sanchez Mortician Services to be included under item number forty-seven, because, uh, discussing it in open court initially would, would be adverse to the county's position.
And, uh, Commissioner, could you add? I think that might also include number thirty-nine, if you could add that.
I will add thirty-nine.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passage unanimously. Okay, at this time, it is nine oh seven, and we will go into, Russell. There he is. Okay, if it's okay, then it is ten fifty-eight. This meeting is now back open. And I will start with, uh, item number one. Discuss and take action authorizing Fairview Cemetery Supervisor to disinter remains from one plot and reinter remains in another plot within the cemetery. And my understanding, at this time with the family, like to make-
May I make a motion in that way, then they can, they can respond to it?
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to allow, uh, the cemetery section to remove the, uh, cement vault from West Block Ten, Space Eighty-three, and reinter it at another marked location, and then allow the Portillo family to use that spot as soon as possible. To waive any fees to the Portillo family that, uh, are on the county side.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Motion passage unanimously. And at this time, Rosa, are you on?
Yes, I am, Your Honor.
Okay.
Um, I think, I think there's a mistake there. It should be plot number eighty-two, uh, the one where my dad should be buried. My mom is buried on eighty-three. Uh, we, we don't want that one exhumed.
Okay, I will amend my motion to West Block Ten, Space Eighty-two. I'm sorry for the incorrect.
Yeah, that's correct, eighty-two.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And Rosa, would there be anything else?
Um, okay, um, yeah, I have a question here. Um, we have paid, uh, five hundred dollars, uh, to opening and closing of that. So, uh, is there going to be a refund on that, or what's going to happen with that?
Yes, ma'am, my, my motion included, uh, reimbursement as well as dismissal of any fees associated with this, with this activity.
Okay. And, uh, as far as fees are included, what, what is included on the fees?
Well, so, so the opening and the bury, the opening and the closing will be on, on the county. It will not, we will not charge the family anything. And any monies that you've already forwarded will be returned to you.
Okay. Alrighty. And, but that would not, that is not covering the funeral expenses, right?
Hmm, that's correct, yes, ma'am.
Alrighty. So what's going to happen then, what y'all are saying is, um, that whoever is in, uh, lot, uh, plot number eighty-two will be taken out, and my dad's going to be put in there, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, and on the release, what are you talking about as far as the release?
Russell, I'm not sure-
You mentioned something about, uh, that that would take care of any, uh, release, any, any, uh, other deals, uh, for the cemetery. What was that, what was that talking about?
Um, I didn't hear that today.
I'm not, I'm not sure what, what that's referring to.
Oh, okay, well, just go ahead. Okay, continue.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else? Allison, you're muted.
Um.
If I could just get Rosa's last name for the record?
Rosa Dominguez.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
The cemetery is going to notify you when they're ready?
Okay, whether cemetery, or will Russell, or who is going to, uh, notify us when, uh, this process is going to be done? And will we be allowed to be there at the time of the process?
Uh, David Sapp should be contacting you as, as soon as possible, or you're welcome to contact him.
Okay, contact who?
Uh, David Sapp.
David Sapp?
Ye- yes, ma'am.
Okay, so he is supposed to contact us?
I'll let David, uh-
Go ahead.
I'll, uh, I'll ask David to notify the family, uh, as soon as they're ready.
Okay. Alrighty.
Now, uh, when you asked if y'all could be there, were you asking about being there for the disinterment or for? Or just, what were you asking to be there for?
For, for, for when they're going to, the burial for my dad.
Oh, for the actual funeral?
Yes.
Yeah, soon as the, uh, is, I'll ask David, as soon as he has done the disinterment, to notify, uh, to notify you and the, uh-
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, that's, uh, that's good.
Rosie, if you're, Rosie, if there are any questions, uh, feel free to contact me, and I, I will try to do my best to, uh, facilitate on this, on this item.
Okay, alright. It sounds good, then.
Alright, well, we, thank you. So moving to item number two.
Do we clock out, or?
Yeah, yeah, if they, they moved on, y'all can go ahead and close out.
Okay, item number two, acknowledge retirement of Judge, uh, George Jody D. Gillis from the one forty-second District Court.
Yes, on, uh, on January one nineteen ninety-three, uh, Judge Gillis, uh, joined, uh, Midland County. And he is currently, uh, after twenty-seven years of service, is, uh, looking to retirement, uh, to retire at the end of this year. But I didn't know if any of our commissioners had a few words.
Well, I've got a couple things to say. Yeah, the, the county is better off because of Jody's service for all these years. He's been an incredible asset, uh, great person, and, uh, we will certainly miss, uh, his talents and his sense of humor.
I just want to say, uh, thanks to Judge Gillis for all the hard work that he's done, of course, through the transition of the old courthouse to this one, and just everything that he's been a part of. Uh, so again, uh, thanks again for, for all your hard work.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Jody for the longevity that he spent and, uh, the, the good humor that he, he displays, uh, both inside and outside the courtroom.
With that, I'll make a motion to acknowledge the retirement of Judge, uh, Jody Gillis from the one forty-second District Court.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Good luck in your retirement, sir. Okay, item number three, acknowledge retirement of Charles Hall as Constable Precinct Four.
Yes, uh, uh, Constable Precinct Four, Charles Hall, uh, joined us January first, two thousand and one, completing nineteen years of service, and will be retiring at the end of this year. Any words from our commissioners?
Well, Constable Hall, we're going to miss you. You, 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 it's always interesting whenever you come up to the podium and address the, the court. Enjoy your retirement. Uh, relax and have fun.
I concur with that. Uh, it's always interesting when he, when he calls or comes to the court, and there's always an interesting point of view that's presented. So good luck in retirement, Charles.
Also want to say thank you for your dedication to Midland County and Precinct Four, and, uh, good luck on your retirement.
I enjoyed all the times we got to ride around in your truck and go look at our precinct, and, uh, I enjoyed all the history you brought to, uh, Precinct Four. I'll make the motion to acknowledge the retirement of, uh, Charles Hall of Constable Precinct Four.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Enjoy your colorful retirement, Charles. Motion pass unanimously. Thanks, sir. Item number four, acknowledge retirement of Lakita Detman from the three eighteenth District Court.
Uh, yes, uh, court reporter, uh, Lakita Detman, uh, from the three eighteenth District Court, hired on, uh, August first, two thousand and four, completing sixteen years of service, and now will be retiring. Uh, didn't know if any of our commissioners had a couple words to say.
Yeah, I certainly, uh, uh, enjoyed her time here. Uh, the, uh, I hate to see a court reporter retire, but I know she's, uh, she's going into raising kids, so I, I wish her luck in that and wish her luck in retirement.
I just want to say thank you for your dedication also to Midland County and for, uh, all the work that you did for the three hundred and eighteenth District Court. Good luck on your retirement.
And I'm like, uh, Robin, we hate to see any kind of court reporter go, but we understand. Thank you for all your hard work over the years.
I'd made the motion that we acknowledge the retirement of Lakita Detman from the three hundred and eighteenth District Court.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good luck in your retirement, enjoy it. Uh, five, acknowledge retirement of Lieutenant John Nichols from the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, uh, Lieutenant John Nichols from the Sheriff's Department. His date of hire was October second, two thousand and eight, and he will be retiring after twelve years of service. Uh, any words from our commissioners?
John, I had no idea you were looking at retiring. Uh, you've been a, you know, a great asset to the, uh, Sheriff's Office. Uh, it's been, I've, I've enjoyed over the last few years getting to know you, uh, and as everybody said, good luck and enjoy your retirement.
All I can say is dang, he finally found where the, the, uh, drains go, and he's, he's, uh, he's not got it hooked up yet. So somebody's got to pick up that torch. No, it's been very interesting, and, and I've enjoyed, uh, John's coming to court and explaining things to us. So good luck in retirement.
I agree with my commissioners. Thank you so much, John, and, and best of luck. I hope you have a great, uh, next phase of your life.
Lieutenant Nichols, once again, yes, thank you for all your hard work and dedication here in Midland, uh, Midland County. Hate to see you go, and, uh, good luck on your retirement.
I got to work with you a few times. I really enjoyed it. Appreciate your professionalism. Midland did benefit by you being there at the Sheriff's Department, so thank you.
Motion to acknowledge the retirement of Lieutenant John Nichols from the Sheriff's Office.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six, acknowledge retirement of Deborah Beddingfield from the Sheriff's Office.
You're muted, John. Or Robert, you're muted.
Apology, sorry about that. Uh, Secretary, uh, Deborah Beddingfield, also known as Debbie, uh, she hired, uh, June thirtieth, nineteen ninety-seven, and will be retiring after twenty-three years of service from the Sheriff's Department. So, uh, just wanted to see if the, uh, commissioners had any words.
Well, I can say the Auditor's Office is surely going to miss her. She does a great job in helping us reconcile the commissary accounts. And, uh, I just wanted to say that we appreciate her and we wish her the best of luck.
I want to say thank you for the time served, Deborah, here with, uh, with Midland County, and, and best of luck.
Hope Veronica's lined somebody up to, uh, to help, or for Deborah to help, uh, on the commissary. But we appreciate her hard work, and, uh, I hope she's looking forward to retirement.
Now Debbie, thank you for all your work in, in the Sheriff's Office. Uh, thank you for helping out Veronica in the Auditor's Office. Uh, yes, have a great retirement.
And I've enjoyed working with you all these years, Deborah. I'll make the motion that we acknowledge the retirement of Deborah Beddingfield from the Sheriff's Office.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. If you made, uh, Veronica happy, you did a great job, so appreciate it. Item number seven, acknowledge Brenda Davis for PWCP Working Well Coordinator Award winner.
Yes, so in the Human Resources Department, uh, Ms. Brenda Davis, our, uh, Employee Relations Coordinator, has been recognized by the, uh, PWCP, uh, as their Fall twenty-twenty Working Well Coordinator Award winner during the, uh, Fall Time Flies Promotion. Uh, it was a campaign, uh, this past fall to help people with their time management skills. And, uh, the PWCP is recognizing her as the newcomer of the year. So, uh, this is more of an acknowledgement, uh, for the court, uh, for Ms., uh, Ms. Davis.
I'll make the motion that we acknowledge Brenda Davis for the PWCP Working Well Coordinator Award winner. Congratulations.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, ma'am. Uh, item number eight, receive presentation from City of Midland PIO, Erin Bailey.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
So I have a little bit, I was asked to speak about the importance of the role of a PIO, so I just wrote a little bit down. I'm going to read that, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Okay.
The role of a Public Information Officer is a crucial role for an organization. The PIO serves as the liaison between employees and elected officials and the media. The PIO, PIO along with their department is responsible for sending press releases, running social media pages, coordinating media interviews, sharing the story of the county and everything happening within the organization to the citizens and more. The role of a PIO can differ from one organization to another, but they are there to help you share the story that you want to tell. The PIO is someone who works with all departments and elected officials. They work to build relationships with the media, so when something urgent comes up, those relationships are in place if a message needs to be shared quickly. With the PIO serving as the point contact for media members, they can help facilitate all interviews by getting the correct person to speak on each story that is requested. The PIO does not have to do the interviews unless they are requested to do so. With messaging for the media and the public, especially at a time of crisis or natural disaster, they are the point person for staff members to give information to, and the PIO works to keep the message concise and unified from all departments. The PIO is also there to help stop problems before they arise. As a PIO, we are constantly monitoring social media and the web to see what is being said about our departments. When we see something that is false information, we work to put the correct narrative out to the public. The importance of having a PIO is only to, is only going to increase as more and more of our citizens become digitally connected. They are the person to share the story of the county and get the information to the public.
Erin, I've gotten a chance to visit with you. I really enjoyed the, the conversation we had last week, and you might do a little bragging on yourself and talk about how the, uh, media has increased, especially the number of people following the city a- as a result of your efforts.
Okay, so one of the things that's been really big for us is we're doing more and more, since everyone, the majority of our messages are shared on social media and through the news stations, our following has increased on the Police Department's Facebook page from thirty, I believe we started at around thirty-three thousand followers, and now we're up to fifty-six thousand followers. So that's a big, a big thing for us.
And you might mention a little bit about what prepared you to take this job, and, and, uh, one of the, one of the comments was that as commissioners and judges, we, uh, we are paid a salary to communicate with our constituents. And that, that's not the case for the mayor, or the city council, or other, uh, non-paid elected officials. How, how might that be different for the county since we already receive a salary? But how do you view that as working out?
So when we talked about this last week, I was telling Randy, a lot of what the PIO does, PIO does is to take the pressure of all the media phone calls and the media questions off of you guys, so you can really do what you're being paid to do. So we are the ones that get the media phone calls. We're the ones that can pitch stories to them when, because they do text all the time. Is there any stories going on at the city? And they'll do the same for what's going on at the county, I'm sure. And then we're the ones that can deal with that, so you guys can focus on the work that needs to be done. And then when the media needs to speak with one of you, you're dealing with us one-on-one, or the PIO. That way they're saying, so-and-so wants an interview, are you free at ten-thirty? You can say yes or no, or actually Friday would work better for me. So it just takes all that pressure off of you, so the media contacts the point person, and they can handle all of those things for you.
And, and Erin, one of my questions was, since we, uh, I, I mentioned jokingly how that, you know, when my wife wanted me to contact my children about some item that she felt strongly about, and I would try to say, I never got it right, because I don't know what's in my wife's mind like she does. So can you address how the PIO does or doesn't interfere, or how do you tell a story, uh, in, in a way that's really effective?
So for us, a lot of the things, we work, in my department, there's three of us. I have myself, um, Terrence, he primarily handles the websites and graphics and a lot of our marketing initiatives, and then Kevin handles all of our video stuff. So the three of us work together and along with the department heads and city managers to figure out what message we want to convey to the public, and what are the things that need to get out to the community. And as you can imagine, right now, the focus is COVID. So we work with everyone to get that message out, and we don't just, you know, we don't, we're not like, oh, you know, today I want to share a story about whatever, but we work with each individual person to realize what needs to be conveyed, and then we work together as a group to get that message out to the community.
Thank you.
Erin, how closely do you work with, uh, your IT department? You were mentioning social media and posts that you put out there. How, how often does that occur?
So we handle all the social media in my department. The only time we work with our IT department is if, say, like, our servers or our computers are down, and then they, sometimes it's like a Facebook issue or a Twitter issue that, like, Facebook itself will be down, and there's nothing we can do about that. So we just wait for that to pop back up, and if it's something like on the server end, like, say we get disconnected, especially with some of us working from home now, then we just contact IT, and it usually gets resolved really quickly.
And then the last question that I have stated that a PIO does not have, does not do the interviews unless they're requested to do so. Um, so whenever somebody calls you to say, hey, we want a statement on a particular item, do you usually call the elected official or department head to say, hey, you know, we're, we're getting this here? And then do you work with that elected official and department head to kind of structure the message that you're about to send out?
Yes, that's exactly what I do. And every entity or city can be different, but at least for the City of Midland, no matter what is requested, if it is with a certain elected official or a certain department, I'll work with them directly, and we'll craft the message together, and then it's always signed off by them and the city managers before it goes to the public.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
How much of your time a day is tied up with your job, do you, do you think, or how much time a week?
With dealing with the media, or with what aspect?
With, uh, your entire PIO position.
Oh, wow. Every week difference, especially since we handle the fire department and police. It really just kind of depends what's happening at those departments, but it's anywhere from, I'd say, if I only work eight to five, that's a really good week for me. So I would say probably on average about fifty hours a week.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? Well, I get to work with you one or two times a week, and I appreciate, you do, so, uh, kudos for how you handle things. So appreciate you coming and explaining a little bit about your job. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have any other questions after this, feel free to reach out.
Thank you very much for speaking to us.
Thank you, Erin.
Bye, have a good day.
Bye. Thank you.
Item number nine, discuss and take action on personnel memorandum.
Good morning, everybody. Can y'all hear me really good?
Yes.
Morning.
This is Mariana Espinosa, Chief Deputy for the Treasures Office. I'm in for Mitzi Baker this morning. And most of you guys should have the agenda for the sick pool. The beginning balance is the five, five, seven.
Marianne, I believe we're on the personnel memorandum item right now.
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
The, the sickly, uh, quarterly report is the next item. The, the sickly quarterly report is the next item.
Sorry, guys. What I'm assuming is the payroll change summary?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's not really anything new, just, just the new hires and separations? We don't have any promotions, demotions, or transfers, or anything other on the agenda? Do you guys have any questions?
Motion to approve the Personnel Memorandum.
Second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item ten, acknowledge quarterly sickly pool report.
Okay, this report is run through July first through September thirtieth. The beginning balance is the five thousand five hundred and seventy hours. We've had seventy-seven hours of donation. The withdrawals is one hundred and seventy-nine point two-three-three-nine hours. The ending balance for the September thirtieth quarter is going to be five thousand four sixty-eight. Do you guys have any questions?
Motion to acknowledge.
Second, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item. Okay, item number eleven, discuss take action on lot item transfers.
Aye. Good morning. This morning, I do have some exceptions to the line item transfers. On page six of fifteen, which is the line item transfer for the fiscal year twenty-one. The IT department is moving money from capital outlay greater than ten thousand into the capital outlay land, and it says to correct the funding for the McCoy Land Survey, but it is out of a capital line, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. On page fifteen of fifteen, line item transfer fourteen twenty-nine, that's just a transfer of the fleet maintenance account. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It is moving thirty-five hundred out of the education and training and into the non-contract vehicle maintenance for tire replacement, VPO. That's all I have as far as exceptions.
Motion to approve line item transfers.
Second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Number twelve, discuss take action on bills and wire transfers.
Sir, I do have some exceptions to the bills this morning, having to do with invoices received that did not have a purchase order attached to it. My first one I have is for the Elections Office, ESNS, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Explanation provided for that invoice says a toner ran out of the OKI election printer when I needed to print the canvas. I am unable to print to the, another printer from the EVS computer. I called the SNS to see when I could get a toner delivered, and they could get it to me the next day. So that's why there was no PO on that one. She didn't call the purchasing department to get a PO on that. GT Distributors for Constable Precinct Four, he bought four ties. He, the PO indicated he could, it was for two ties. And so therefore, that is why it's an exception. I tried to get him to get me an explanation, but I have not received anything as of right now. But like I said, there was, he ordered, the PO had two ties. He ended up getting the invoice as four ties. And so because he exceeded the PO, that's why it's an exception this morning. I have one for NPS Steel Control for SO Admin, no PO, two thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents. And the explanation provided says, invoice, I am needing to expense this invoice to NPS Spillman. The purchase order was not rolled over in twenty nineteen, so the invoice was never paid. The GL account that needs to be come out of indicates which one it is, but yes, the invoice is dated October of twenty nineteen. And so if there was a PO at that point in time, no one indicated to us that it needed to be rolled forward, and therefore it needs to be expensed. So basically, it has no PO. The next one I have, I have two overhead door company invoices for the SO detention, one in the amount of two thousand thirty-three, one in the amount of a hundred and thirty. Same explanation for both. I am out of money and cannot change the purchase order. Please roll over the funds for this twenty-twenty-one budget. So basically, there was initially a PO that was available, but the PO only had a thousand dollars. The invoices are for two thousand thirty-three and one for a hundred and thirty. So therefore, that is why it's an exception to the invoices this morning, or to the payments bills this morning. Arkhill Smith and Cooper, twenty-six thousand seventy-four, says County Commissioners line, it needs approval. This one's not an exception to the POs. It just needs the approval of all that amount, I believe, is for the TWDB application, the water that Andrew does. But because it is coming out of the combined Commissioners Budget, I just wanted to make sure that I brought it to everyone's attention. So. And that's for the current year. I have also several invoices for Sidaptic. They are the ones that worked on the door controls for the Sheriff Attention. And I have two thousand five ninety-four forty, two thousand nine thirty-five fifty, two thousand twenty-six, one thousand two thirty-one fifty-one, two thousand eight hundred, a hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents, one thousand six fifty-four seventy, two thousand six oh nine forty, and three thousand nine ninety-four seventy. So every time that Sidaptic was called to make any repairs or changes to the door controls, they were charging us. The Auditor's Office never received any of those invoices. Some of those invoices are dated back to December of twenty nineteen. I believe what they had thought was that this was supposed to be under the warranty, and therefore that's why they were not paying for these. But apparently, it did not, it was not covered under the warranty, and therefore all of these need to be paid. And there was no PO on that, because again, they thought it was under the warranty. So that's what I have under those Sidaptic bills.
Was there no contract with Sidaptic for that? Because I know we, we changed the, all the door locks through Sidaptic.
I believe there was a contract, and in speaking with Justin in regards to it, I think that the warranty covered us for the full year. And it covered us if they called to get something troubleshooted, but not if they had to come out and make any repairs. All of this is labor costs.
Okay.
So that, that is my understanding of it, that it was covering us only for the first year. And, and this is, this, these services calls were beyond that first year.
Okay.
I saw it. Is this something that was shoddy work, or, or, if somebody here from the jail, was this shoddy workmanship? Or what's, what was the, why was it not covered?
Benny, are you there?
Benny's on the.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good morning. I cannot answer the question as far as shoddy workmanship. I wasn't aware of this until the auditor called about us. I don't think that's the case, though, Commissioner. I truly don't believe that it was. I think that the, that just the amount of use and the aids that we were up against when this was done, my understanding from talking with, with the people that actually are doing the work is we're, we're just, we're dealing with some, some antique equipment. It was repaired to the best of their ability. I've got, I've got Captain Heryard here, and he is agreeing with that as well.
Well, I thought we replaced all those door locks.
I don't know if we actually replaced the entire thing. I was not here, nor was Sheriff Pryner when that was done. And Captain Heryard is, is showing on his face. He doesn't think that they were completely replaced in their entirety either, Commissioner.
Well, we'll have to go back and look at that, but because I, I certainly thought that we were going to redo all of it.
I, I will do some research, Commissioner, and, and I can have those answers for you. I just don't have them now. The way this was agendized, and when the auditor and I talked, it was just, it was more on, along the lines of why there wasn't a PO issued, an explanation therefore. But I will, I'll continue to do some research, and I can let you know whether it was a complete replacement, or if it was just an overhaul.
Okay. Can we hold this till Friday?
Sir?
Can we hold this till Friday?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, that will give me, that will give me time to do that. I, I, I do not believe I'm going to be here Friday, but Captain Heryard can be here to address it. And the auditor will have the answer before Friday as well.
Okay.
Okay, we'll hold those. I do have an additional one for Warren Cat, a hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents out of the Road and Bridge Department. And these have to do with vector not notifying them that there was a hydraulic pump for a tractor that was damaged, and so therefore they did not obtain a PO. And then, sorry, that was the vector one. There was one for Warren Cat for Road and Bridge, a hundred and sixteen fifty. Warren Cat invoice needs to be expensed. There was no PO written for this because John with the vector takes care of the generators and doesn't notify me, so I can write a PO. And this is from Barbara and Facilities. That is what I have as far as the exceptions to the PO. I do have some additional bills for your consideration, and one of them has to do with Greenwood ISD. And the court has already agreed to help them out with the CARES Act money. And so I want to go with, because we do have a deadline coming up for all the reporting for the CARES Act grants. It is seventy-four thousand sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. I know that Russell was working to get those MOU signed, so that we could go ahead and get this released. Once I get that, I just want your authorization to go ahead and, and issue this check. I also have another one for Christine Schwartz. It's just a thousand dollars. It's a regular bill for a court-appointed attorney. If you would, we missed that one, and if you would allow me to go ahead and put that one in. I have some additional bills, subject to your approval of an MOU with the Midland Humane Coalition. But I can wait until we approve that before I bring that one, those up.
Veronica, on the Greenwood CARES money, was, is that the total amount that we had agreed on?
Yes, sir.
I was thinking it was higher. Okay.
I think it's it is two hundred and ninety-six thousand, based on the letter that was received from Greenwood, it's two hundred and ninety-six thousand two fifty, the cost for all the devices. So the state will match a hundred and forty-eight thousand one twenty-five, as long as Midland County provides a twenty-five percent total of seventy-four thousand sixty-two.
Okay.
So I'll bring up the other ones once we approve that Humane Coalition contract.
Okay.
I make. Go ahead.
Commissioner.
Let's make a motion to approve all bills and wire transfers.
Can you hold this adapted?
Hold this adapted, and Veronica, you said that you're going to bring up the Midland Humane Coalition later, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll hold that one as well.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item number thirteen, discuss take action on budget amendment for HADA two thousand nineteen.
Yes, I, so HADA two thousand nineteen is just basically funds that we received from, actually, it's a pass-through. It's from the federal government. It passes through the state government to give us these funds. At the beginning of, when we were adopting the budget, we already knew that this grant was in effect, so we kind of estimated how much money to put in the budget for this year. But apparently, they spent a lot more money at the end of the twenty-twenty fiscal year. So this amendment is just to correct the balance of what's in that grant, so that we don't overspend the grant. So it's, it's basically increasing some lines by thirteen thousand seven fifty-nine, but decreasing other lines by a hundred and two thousand nine eighty-sixty-five. And all it is, is just a correction, so that we don't overspend the full amount of this grant.
I'll make the motion that we that we approve the budget amendment as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item number fourteen is to discuss take action on two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty purchase orders to roll forward to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
Yes, sir. I provided a list for you of all the purchase orders that are still open, and we have not received any invoices for, that, where money has been committed. In some, in most of these cases, the work hasn't been completed, or something is on backorder, and therefore we haven't spent any of these funds, or haven't rolled any of these funds forward. But these departments are requesting us to do so. I just wanted to bring to your attention these purchase orders that need to be rolled forward and get your approval on that. I will say that, that's eleven million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand five seventy-seven thirty-four. Some of the big ones have to do with the roads, and I know Andrew kind of had a, a big plan on how we were going to do the roads. And so some of those big POs that we're needing to roll forward to the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year has to do with the roads. Also, some of the ones that we've already rolled forward, and that's only because we've already received the bills. Because if something is encumbered in the twenty-twenty fiscal year, but we received the bills in the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, those are automatically rolled forward to the subsequent year. And that's, that total is fifteen million, two fifty-one, seven oh seven ten. Of that, thirteen million, seven sixteen is what is attributed to the road projects. That's funds that were rolled from the previous year. I tell you all this, just to make sure that you're aware, that while your fund balance will still be a healthy fund balance, I think it'll be somewhere close to a hundred million dollars. Remember that not only the money that you have budgeted for the current fiscal year is what will be expensed, but also these POs that have been encumbered, and the money has rolled forward to the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year.
Veronica, what is the total amount on the roads that you're talking about? Is this the three point five? Or is there more?
Let me look really quick. So it's based on the sheets that I sent you, and yeah, that, there's three point five million. That's part of the eleven million dollars.
And then there's, there's six point nine million of IT. Is that correct? So are those the two, the line share?
Yes, six point nine million of IT. Some of them have to do with the radios, the Wi-Fi door locks, multi-year radio project. So I pretty much, I had the departments, the list that I sent you is, I had the departments go in and, and give me the PO numbers, the vendors, the description of what the project is for, and then, of course, why we haven't paid for it. So I wanted to, Christie and I have kind of been looking at this and, and talking about this. There's a lot of POs that really don't get fulfilled by the end of the year. And so our deadline is usually the end of August, for everybody to get all their POs in. We're thinking, and of course, with, if you agree with it, to move that deadline to July thirtieth, so that we can get all of our POs closed, so that it could better reflect, you know, the numbers at, at the end of the fiscal year. Because like I said, right now, if you combine both the ones that we've already rolled forward and the ones that are still out there that we haven't received any invoices, that's about twenty-six point nine million dollars of the twenty-twenty budget that has rolled forward into the twenty-twenty-one budget. So, like I said, if we can move that deadline to July thirtieth, and even ask our departments to check all of their open purchase orders at the end of each quarter, so that we can get a lot of those closed. And, and so some of the issues that we were having, and people who were asking us to roll forward, these POs just had to do with the fact that they hadn't got. these P Os just had to do with the fact that they hadn't gotten invoices. Of course, we told them that, you know, they needed to, that's why I'm requesting Friday, uh, to have an additional commissioner's court to pay all these bills is because we, we said, if we don't get all your bills, just it's only if the goods and services haven't been fulfilled because something's on back order or something hasn't been finished. I know a big project, for example, is all the elevators. And due to COVID nineteen, that project didn't get completed. Uh, so those were the type of P Os that we're allowing to roll forward. If we just haven't received the invoices, we told them they had until Wednesday to submit all their invoices so we can get those approved on Friday. And then we can close out our fiscal year.
I do want to make a point real quick, looking at the I T department. I know we were just talking about Sidaptic. And there is a purchase order number here for the jail check, uh, jail cell check project, which I think is the one that Commissioner Donnelly was referring to. If you could send us a, uh, I'll, I'll request that purchase order. If you could send it to us as we prepare for Friday, cause I believe that that's gonna be the, the jail doors that we were just discussing about Sidaptic, if I'm not mistaken.
And also, and I'm glad you brought that up. Um, we had one. Um, so I had a request that everybody to submit all their P Os that needed to be rolled forward. I had one come in at four fifty-three on Friday. And that is for the jail. There's another P O, P O twenty-seven sixty-four for Sidaptic. And this description of it is to retrofit eight existing doors. Uh, reason job not done yet. So this one came in on Friday, close to five o'clock and asking for this P O to be rolled forward. And it was, it's a Sidaptic P O, and I can get through that information also.
Thank you.
So I just need the court's approval to go ahead and, uh, move forward and roll these P Os forward.
Make the motion that we roll forward or rebudget the items in these P Os for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one year.
Commissioner Donnelly, this is Benny Mountlock. Can I interrupt before you go any further?
Certainly.
Uh, just talked with Justin Stevenson in I T on these items. And I just went with what the auditor just brought up. The door locks that you're incurring about have only been repaired. The, the actual work for the entire replacement, according to Justin, has not been done yet. So all of this is non-warranty work on other projects that have been, that have been addressed, but not the doors. Uh, I found out that much and then when the, the auditor just brought up the other one on the doors, I think this is the day-to-day stuff. We're just trying to keep the jail going until we get to replacing all the locks. And Justin said that had not been done yet. Is that kind of clearing it up a little bit?
Yeah, I just, I thought that contract was let earlier this year to replace those doors or replace the locks, retrofit the locks. I don't know. Veronica, do you have a date on, on that purchase order?
Commissioner, um, Sidaptic hasn't been out yet. It sounds like due to COVID is what they were telling us.
And the date on the purchase order is August twenty-fourth of twenty.
Okay, so it's only been a couple of months or?
Yes, sir. And that's, that's for the work that you were questioning or concerned about to be done. What we're doing on these P Os is work that has been done. Non-warrant, non-warranty related work.
Did you turn in, uh, additional, uh, P Os that need to be rolled over for maintenance in these areas? In the, for the repair of the door locks?
I, I believe that was rolled over. That's what we just went over, I think.
Yeah, but this continuing maintenance for, by Sidaptic has not, you know, there's no P O for that.
Right, sir. There was no P O for the end of the year. So therefore, whatever, um, expenses incurred are gonna have to come out of the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year budget.
Like a blanket purchase order from henceforth? Is that, is that what?
Yes, sir.
We can, we can make that happen. I'm just trying to explain where, uh, you and I had visited on this before. Uh, with the auditor and I want to make sure the commissioner's court is, is clear as what I am anyway.
Well, Commissioner Sanchez, you want to, let's go ahead and finish this motion and then we'll recall the bills. If, if you're okay with that, Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll agree with you on that. So second motion.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimous. You want to recall? Item twelve, is that correct? This goes take action on bills and wire transfers?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner Sanchez, do you want to include the Sidaptic in that, in your motion now?
We'll go ahead and include the Sidaptic in the motion, uh, and it's gonna be just for, my understanding now is this is day-to-day stuff that Sidaptic is invoicing us for. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So with that, I'll make that motion that we approve. That's Sidaptic.
Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Veronica. Uh, is Andy with us right now? Andy, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and call an item here so I don't get out of sync and lose it. It's an addendum. Uh, discuss take action on budget for the O O G COVID grant.
Yes, sir.
So you're on.
They, are, are there any questions? I mean, I think everything had been done. We had to agenda this for recognition. Uh, Lieutenant Ackland is here in case there were any questions on it.
What, what is for, uh, commissioners is, uh, for some more P P E? You know, we, we really don't know where this thing's gonna go. I know they're coming out with a shot. But how long that's gonna take? And we still need officers and stuff. Still need some protection for additional P P E.
Okay.
Well, I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the budget amendment for the O O G COVID grant.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Item number fifteen is to discuss take action on professional training for all employees and leadership training for elected officials, department heads and directors.
Yes, um, one of the things that I, I found was, uh, embedded in our, uh, employee assistance program, uh, the company is called A W P. Is, uh, that they offer continuing education classes. Their one-hour, uh, webinars, uh, held once a month, typically the third Wednesday of every month. Every quarter, they offer a, uh, a leadership, uh, type class. It's already pre-selected. And, uh, uh, it's geared towards, uh, pretty much anyone in a supervisory role on up. Uh, in addition, because we've already paid for this, uh, we also get to select, uh, up to six more classes in a year. Uh, that, uh, are probably near and dear to our hearts, uh, that would help uh, provide, uh, continuing education, whether it be harassment, bullying, etiquette. Uh, there, there's a huge laundry list of, of courses that we can choose and we can schedule. I think they need a minimum of six, but I think it caps out at about fifty. Uh, their, their one-hour, uh, their one-hour webinar trainings and it's already paid for. Uh, we've been paying for it to, if I understand correctly, our E, uh, E A P, uh, is at a cost of a dollar thirty per employee per month. So we're, we're, we've already paid for this. It's already, it, it's just another benefit offered to, uh, uh, to our workforce.
Is this something that you?
Oh, excuse me. Robert, uh, does this? For, for our hours for judges and commissioners for the training hours we're required to get each year?
Uh, I can find out. I can find out. Um,
I wish you would.
My, my, uh, initial synopsis was probably not. I think this was real more general training, but I can, I can ask and verify.
You're probably right.
On a C E U's, absolutely.
And would this be handled, uh, through you, Robert, by making folks aware of what's available?
Yes, yes. I need other courses and.
Say they had a, a topic that everybody was in. If they had a topic everybody was interested in and say there was a hundred people, would they do it twice? Fifty and fifty?
Uh, we, we could do it twice. Uh, it would, it would take up two of our six slots, uh, that we would have available. Uh, there, there's also a tracking mechanism for those who sign up. And, uh, and if we do hit that capacity, I can always, uh, uh, be notified of that and, and set up the next class. Absolutely.
Okay. I think if we're paying for it, it sounds like a great deal that I would hope we could, uh, enact it and roll in for everybody.
I'll make that motion that we approve the professional training for all employees and leadership training for elected officials, department heads and directors.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, sir. Uh, number sixteen. Discuss take action on facilities director applications and interviews.
Is there any action?
I believe we will, uh, I'd like to authorize through a motion, Robert, to, uh, schedule interview times for the, for, for all the, uh, appropriate people to, uh, interview the top candidates.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Item seventeen, discuss take action following bond renewals. Commissioner Precinct One, Commissioner Precinct Three, Constable Precinct One, Constable Precinct Three, Constable Precinct Four, County Attorney, District Attorney, District Clerk, Road and Bridge Administrator, Tax Assessor Collector.
I'll make the motion to, uh, to renew the, uh, following bond renewals. Commissioner Precinct One, Commissioner Precinct Three, Constable Precinct One, Constable Precinct Three, Constable Precinct Four, County Attorney, District Attorney, District Clerk, Road and Bridge Administrator and Tax Assessor Collector.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimous. Number eighteen, discuss take action on Midland County Public Library's pandemic plan. Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning.
Morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, thank you so much for taking the time to listen to this plan, which, um, I have already sent or Jenny sent it out to, to the court. And then I have a, um, an infographic that was sent out as well. The reason that, uh, we wanted to put this on the agenda is Commissioner Sanchez asked me to evaluate our, um, pandemic plan, which we had, um, or had gone to court, uh, back in probably April or so and presented this plan. I just made some modifications to it which the plan just outlines different phases that the library would be open to the public as well as services that would be offered to the public. So I just made some minor modifications on the plan, which would be just going back to reduced hours. And I think the way the plan is laid out is that at any given time, depending on what is happening in the community, that we could go back to a previous phase, no matter what phase we were in. So if we were in phase three and there was a spike, uh, in the cases or, or something like that, we could go back to phase one and, or phase two. It modify the number of hours that we're open to the public as well as, like I said, the services that we offer.
Debbie.
Go ahead.
Sorry, what, 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 what phase are we in right now?
I believe we are in um, phase three. Well, we're kind of in phase three with some aspects of phase four because we don't really have a regular, a regular library hours right now. We're open from nine A M. to six P M. And then on Saturdays from ten, uh, no, nine A M. to two P M. And our regular library hours are ten to seven. So we're still not back to our regular library hours. But we are open almost the same amount of hours. Except on Saturdays, uh, we're open ten to two, nine, pardon me, nine to two. And our regular Saturday hours are ten to seven. So right now we're opening one hour earlier at nine instead of at ten, and we close one hour earlier at six instead of seven.
Thank you.
And the services that we offer, uh, we do offer, um, most of the services, except that we don't have, um, we're not allowing the public to use our, the meeting rooms or the study rooms. And we also don't have any in-person programs. Commissioner Sanchez?
Debbie, I was looking at your phase three, um, letter B. It says open to public week two, and it talks about the capacity of fifty percent according to the governor's announcement.
Yeah.
Um, would you say that that's where we're at now?
Yes, we're about fifty to seventy-five percent on, on the capacity. Now, we did expand that a little bit when we had, um, early voting to allow for more people to be in the library to early vote, but we never did get above seventy-five percent capacity.
And the last question that I had is, uh, when you and I spoke, you talked about curbside. Is curbside, would that be available for both libraries, uh, if allow folks to come in on the times that they could open? Or can you, uh, expand a little bit on the curbside?
Sure. Um, we started our curbside, curbside service in April. And we didn't actually open the doors to the public until May. And since we, uh, have been doing curbside, we have checked out close to three thousand items and we've served close to seven hundred people. Or not people, we count the vehicles that come by. And that's only at the downtown library and we still are offering curbside. So with the modification, we would go ahead and start curbside services at Centennial as well and have that available at both locations. We just need to make some, um, minor adjustments. At, at, uh, Centennial, some logistics to figure out where the patrons would park and whatnot. So the the library staff would still work their regular hours. Full-time staff would still be required to work forty hours a week and then part-time staff would work as, um, as necessary or as needed to fulfill the needs of the libraries. So even though we would be close to the public, we, the staff would still be there. And of course, we'd have curbside would be offered even during the time that we're not open to the public. So we would need people there to answer the phones, answer any questions. Uh, we would still continue to do our, uh, live Facebook programs or any virtual programs. And we already have curbside services. And then each library location does have the, uh, three sixty, uh, misters. So we would be, that would give us time to go through and mist the libraries and sanitize them.
Debbie, the I must have missed it through here, but the Bookmobile, it does it? Is it mentioned in here? And if so, I don't, I don't, I can't, I don't know where.
In the in the plan?
Yes.
I think it's at the very end. But I don't see it in here either. But the Bookmobile does run. We are going out to different stops right now. And we just recently started that, and part of that was to offer Wi-Fi services to different areas in the community so that the school kids could go to the Bookmobile and use the Wi-Fi. And but the we have had a lot of checkout so far on the Bookmobile, and that is something that we would continue as long as it's safe to do so. If we are in a safe location and the staff, the Bookmobile staff is is safe, and then we would continue to do the stops, especially for Wi-Fi purposes. We, excuse me, we we have gone to Casa and just parked the Bookmobile to allow different people in the community to go to that location and use the Wi-Fi as a hotspot. We'd continue to do that.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions? The staff is doing a great job. We have been doing a lot of online programs and virtual programs. We have, we do Facebook Live programs, and then we have programs on YouTube. And we have very healthy attendance for those. I would say averages twenty-five hundred a month or so, maybe maybe a little bit more depending on what the programs are. We might have over five hundred people joining us on Facebook Live program. So we're continuing continuing to figure out different ways to take the services to the community in whichever manner we can think of and, you know, like partnering with the sheriff's department to do the Christmas parade and things of that nature that we can still offer services and programs to the community and keep the community safe as well as keeping the staff safe.
Debbie, would you like for me to share the infographic?
Sure, that would be great. Thank you, Jim.
Okay.
This infographic is something that some staff members worked on, Hannah Johnson, Megan Butt, Matt Blazer and Whitney Hyde worked on this infographic, getting all the information, all the stats together. It only reflects November. We just have so many stats to keep up with that we narrowed it down to November. These are the the types of things that we're doing at the library. These are the the breakdown for the afternoon versus the morning. You can see there's more people that come in between one and six than from nine to two, although it's not that big of a difference. The proposed hours would be from opening to the public from one to six, and that's the reason for this breakdown. And there is some overlap here because this is from nine to two and not nine to one. But we, again, we're trying to keep our services going and having the library available to the community. But at the same time, we need to think about the county staff and personnel and make sure that they are that they're safe and that they feel like their needs are being taken care of. And, you know, we need to be concerned with their well-being as well. And this would be a winter plan. Of course, it would be just temporary. Like I said, we could go from one phase to a different phase pretty readily, just giving having enough time to give patrons or the community enough notice for the change in hours. We wouldn't change from one phase to another overnight unless it was some kind of catastrophe or something like that. But we would give the patrons plenty of time to to know, let them know what phase we were in and what the hours would be.
Debbie, so now you need us to go ahead and approve the changes that you've made, these additions that are in red on the where it says modifications?
Yes, and I think also, Commissioner, there should be maybe some discussion or I I don't know how you, the court would want to handle it, but maybe some leeway on allowing us to to know which phase to move into at any given time depending on what's going on with the community and what, in particular, what might be going on in the library. For example, if we, God forbid, had a spike in cases with library personnel, could we move to a different phase without having to go to court? Of course, we I could notify all the work members of what's going on and and be able to move into a different phase. That would be something that, you know, maybe have a little bit of leeway there to decide tho- those types of things.
Debbie, I think that at the end of the day, since you're the director, that's something that would be a decision that you would make. But I would highly encourage you to reach out to Justin Bunch. I think he might be a better resource in figuring out what exactly is going on in Midland. I know that Judge Johnson as well, they there's a meeting that occurs often in regards to COVID, in regards to the numbers, where we're at. I would feel more comfortable to defer to Judge Johnson or to Justin to be able to answer that because they're the ones who have the hard facts in front of them. They're the ones who are dealing with this day in and day out.
Right. Okay. I could always confer with them prior to moving to a different phase if needed. But of course, I would always let the court know what's going on.
Great, thank you. Well, with that, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve this Midland County Public Libraries pandemic plan with the changes and also to allow the about the librarian to make the decision on to make make these decisions within the library and that she conferred with Justin Bunch and Judge Johnson.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous.
Hey, Robin, you're muted. Robin, you're muted. There you go.
Thank you.
Discuss item number nineteen, discuss take action authorizing the county judge to sign facilities report for Midland County Public Libraries.
Your honor, I'm going to let Hannah Johnson handle this since she does the exhibits and programs for the.
Afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
This facilities report is something that we use when looking for exhibits. So when I'm working with those companies, they like to see, you know, what our facility is and if everything would fit, if we follow all the guidelines that they have in their contracts. And this has not been updated recently, so we have gone through that. And we would just like to have that available to give to those exhibit companies when searching for exhibits.
And is this the same one that we've been using in the past for the previous exhibits, or is this something completely different?
I do believe it was used in the past for previous exhibits. And the reason we use the American Association of Museums is because most exhibit companies are familiar with that report, so it's just easier to use.
Okay, thank you.
And Russell, is this something you've looked over and have concerns or no concerns with? You froze up and you're muted, Russell.
All right. I reviewed it, Judge. I do not have any concerns.
Okay.
I'll make the motion authorizing the county judge to sign the facilities report for the Midland County Public Libraries. Second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item number twenty is discuss take action on budget amendment for grant number three, six, four, zero, five, zero, two.
Yes, good afternoon, gentlemen. This is an item that we brought to you as part of the budget process. We already received approval to apply for the budget or apply for the grant. We received the award. The burden is coming out of our PTI fees. We have, actually, this is just needing the court to acknowledge it so that we can actually receive the funds and get them in the correct line item and get our employee paid.
Motion to approve the budget amendment for grant number three, six, four, zero, five, zero, two.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item twenty-one, discuss take action on equitable sharing agreement and certification between the DEA and Midland County District Attorney's Office.
And yes, so the federal government has a program called Equitable Sharing for State, Local and Travel Law Enforcement Agencies. In there, they specifically address the fact the ability of state and local prosecutorial agencies and TFOs to be able to task force officers to be able to receive a portion of the funds that are seized as part of a federal investigation that either a state prosecutor's office, like if we work a portion of a case that then goes federal, then or if a task force officer works on a case that goes federal, then we're entitled to a portion of the sharing. The Sheriff's Department currently has the same type of equitable sharing agreement. This would not take away from any funds that are the Sheriff's Department would be receiving as part of their work. It just takes more money out of the hands of the federal government. There is no duty of the county to match any of these funds. They're managed simply similarly to asset forfeiture funds. And we sent the agreement to Russell in order for him to review it. There was some confusion on the part of Ms. Anderson, who sent the email to Russell asking him to review it and see if Judge Johnson was okay with it. She, Russell did review it, and he replied that it looked good. She misunderstood, thinking that Judge Johnson had actually been asked about it, and he had not been. And so we're coming here because it requires for the governmental body to approve application, which is the Commissioner's Court, and then for Judge Johnson to sign off on it.
Laura, I have a question. On here, it says that the agency fiscal year 2021 budget is seven point one million dollars. Is that available to everybody applying for this, or is that the amount that's available to Midland County specifically?
That is, that's what approximately our annual budget is.
Okay, thank you.
That when I say are approximately the district attorney's annual budget.
I see.
So it in, for instance, we cannot, the way that the equitable sharing agreement reads, we can't use it to offset anything that's already budgeted, but we can use to enhance. So when we're planning for the future, if we foresee that there's something that such as potential ammunition, then this is something that we could cover out of the equitable sharing agreement rather than coming to the county to ask for those funds.
Thank you.
Well, I'll make the motion to acknowledge this submission of the equitable sharing agreement and certification between the DEA and Midland County District Attorney's Office. Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's all I have. May I be excused?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Item twenty-two, acknowledge summary of all collections for October 2020 for tax office.
Judge, I think Karen is having some camera and audio and video difficulties, so she may or may not be able to answer any questions. But she has assured me that her backup, the collections are straightforward and just like in the past.
We can see her on the screen, but I saw her talking and we didn't hear. Anybody have any questions, comments or concerns? Oh, there you are. Okay. Now, Ken, yes. Does anybody have any comments?
No, I'm I'm making a motion to acknowledge the collections for October 2020 for tax office.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, ma'am. Item number twenty-three, discuss take action on MOU between Midland County Drug Court and Permia Care. Judge Rainey.
Yes, good morning, earth, afternoon, now. Included in my justification is a copy of the MOU that was sent over from Permia Care. This is just detailing the responsibilities we have to each other. There are no funds being expended by the county or by Midland County Drug Court. And so I'm just needing to come before you and get approval to to sign off on this.
Russell, have you reviewed this?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have led with that. Russell's both of the things I'm bringing up for you today.
I forgot to unmute myself. Yes, Commissioner, I reviewed it and it's fine.
I make a motion to approve the MOU between Midland County Drug Court and Permia Care.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Motion passes unanimous. I've been at the table. Item twenty-four, item twenty-five, discuss take action on MOU between Midland CSCD and Midland County Drug Court.
Yes, item twenty-four, as you noted, it was my error. I sent the wrong email. You already did that a few years ago. So this interlocal agreement between Midland County CSCD or adult probation, it is formalizing the what we have been doing since the beginning of Midland County Drug Court. And that is, after my research and resource searching, the counseling provided by Midland County CSCD was the most efficient and cost-effective option that we had to go with for our participants. And so this is just detailing what we that we can pay Midland County CSCD for those services. And Russell actually drafted this and, of course, approved it.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between Midland CSCD and Midland County Drug Court.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Motion passes unanimous. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-six, acknowledge collection fees for detention.
Do you have any questions?
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Motion passes unanimous. Motion passes unanimously. Discuss, take item twenty-seven, discuss and take action on budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty savings bond grant in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four dollars.
Any, any discussion or question on this? Gentlemen, it's just to get the budget amendment made so we can start using those funds for the vine. I think you had, uh, written back up on it. I just want to make sure there weren't any questions.
Motion to approve the, uh, budget amendment for the vine, the saving vine grant.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you. Item twenty-eight, acknowledge collection fees for civil warrants.
I'll make the motion to, uh, acknowledge the collection fee for civil, civil and warrants. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-nine, discuss take action on bid for new paving construction of South County Road twelve thirty-two, Phase Three.
Andrew, you want to take this or you want me to do it?
Yeah, yes, sir. So, uh, good afternoon. So, uh, the, the next several, twenty-nine through thirty-two, and we can do them individually, but what, what it is, is just based on that letting schedule that we reviewed in the last couple of weeks. Um, just to make it, uh, official or known that we, uh, when we get the projects available, uh, that they would be let out for, for bidding per the applicable rules, whether it be CTF lowest bidder or best value, uh, contracts.
I'd make the motion that we, uh, uh, bid out the new paving construction of South County Road twelve thirty-two, Phase Three, from County Road eleven sixty to State Highway one fifty-eight, using CTF grant.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item thirty, discuss take action on bid bid for Culver at South County Road twelve thirty-two in Monahan's Draw.
Very similar. This one's also CTF, um, for the, uh, portion of work on twelve thirty-two that remains, uh, in Phase Two that we're working on now.
Yeah, we got the clomer on this one, didn't we, Andrew?
Yes, sir.
So, we can proceed on this. I'd make the motion that we, uh, bid out the Culver at South County Road twelve thirty-two in Monahan's Draw, using the CTF grant.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item thirty-one, discuss take action on RFP for paving reconstruction of West Industrial Avenue.
This one's not CTF. It, it does have a, a city of Midland coordination effort in it. Uh, so, some portion will be reimbursed by the city, uh, after work is complete.
Andrew, hadn't we agreed on a fifty-fifty deal on this?
Um, that's what I understand. I, I've not, I don't have that in writing, but that's what I understand has been discussed.
Okay.
What about all the permits with the railroad company? Is there anything that we need to be concerned about?
Um, a few weeks ago, you guys approved us to proceed with a, um, set into an arrangement with Union Pacific, and that effort is ongoing. It, it appears as though there's no, uh, hangups or hiccups. They're reviewing the final documents now, the construction documents. And if, if it goes as it has so far, there shouldn't be any comments that need addressing. Uh, we'll, we'll pay that bill, that ten thousand dollar, uh, bill that was approved. And then that will allow us to move into letting, uh, in December or January.
Great.
So, to answer your question, no. It, it's being, it's being reviewed and worked, and right now, there's no hangups.
Well, I'd, I'll make a motion, uh, that we go on RFP for paving reconstruction of West Industrial Avenue.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item thirty-two, discuss take action on RFP for paving reconstruction of County Road twelve seventy, Phase One.
This is, this is one that was not intended to be phased, but we're gonna go ahead and split it up into a north construction project and a south construction project. Um, Phase One will be from Interstate twenty frontage down south to County Road one sixty. Um, that, that will actually be the next thing we let out. That'll be fairly soon here, in the next couple of weeks.
Well, I'll make the motion to go out for RFP for paving reconstruction of County Road twelve seventy, Phase One, from I twenty south to West County Road one sixty using general funds. Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item thirty-three, discuss take action on canon lease agreement for Title Four child support courts.
Yes, sir. This is a replacement copier. The lease for their current machine is currently expiring. The monthly cost will be one hundred eighteen dollars and ninety-three cents, and the lease agreement is using the state of Texas DIR contract.
I'd make a motion to, on the canon lease agreement for Title Four child support courts.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item thirty-four, discuss take action paying BMW to empty restroom trailer that was placed at Midland Memorial Hospital. Justin?
Yes, that's gonna be the, uh, trailer that was, um, originally at, uh, the horseshoe that we moved over to the ER ramp to provide restroom facilities for the nurses over there. Um, BMW is on contract with the county to, uh, empty that trailer. Typically, it's about a hundred dollars, every two hundred and fifty gallons. I think it's a thousand gallon tank, he said. I don't foresee it being a, a whole lot of money, because I don't think it's gonna be used a lot, just a few nurses out there. I just want to make y'all aware of, of that purchase. If y'all have any questions for.
Motion to allow BMW to empty restroom trailer that was placed at MMH, as needed.
I will second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item thirty-five, discuss take action on agreement with Sanchez Morticians Services and MMH. Were we gonna table this until Friday? Uh, let Russell, uh, negotiate. That's, yeah. Okay. We'll table item thirty-five. Item thirty-six, discuss take action amendment contract. That'll be table till Friday also. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Item, item thirty-seven, discuss take action on donated materials from Shell Exploration and Production Company, value at eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for COVID response.
We just want to bring this donation to the court. Um, they donated ten thousand face masks, ten thousand disposable masks, five thousand natural gloves, medium, and other five thousand large gloves, uh, to distribute to whoever needs them for COVID.
I'd like to motion to acknowledge the donated materials from Shell Exploration Production Company, the value of eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Item thirty-eight, receive COVID response update from Justin.
We still continue to do what we've been doing. Um, and we meet with the team once a week. Uh, we talked about, um, just based stuff that's going on and, and issues that the city's having with contact tracing. We threw some ideas around. And it looks like the city's able, been able to hire some additional employees, um, part-time employees. We got some resources from the state to come in and help them. And they've also got a facility over there at their health department. They're gonna open up and expand their resources there. So hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to get them caught, um, caught up, because right now, I believe there, we're nineteen days behind on contacting positive cases. And that's been kind of an issue with the, getting the information we need to the hospital, so that's our biggest concern right now. Um, the hospital and the city are opening up a tech, a second testing facility at Martin Luther King Center. Hopefully, that'll be ready either this, into this week or starting next week. So we'll have two testing facilities that the, the Unified Command is, is operating within the city. Other than that, um, that's really the big things that are going on. If anybody has any questions.
Both, Justin, those test, testing sites are by appointment only, is that correct?
Yes, it'll be through the six-eight nurse, just like it is at West Campus.
Right, okay.
So there's increasing their, their capabilities. Um, I will bring, the, the percentage, um, for the hospital as far as capacity has been trending down the past six days. Uh, it was at twenty-five, I think, point, point five nine percent, five days ago, and right now, we're at nineteen point eight three capacity percent for the region. So, we have been seeing a, a decline in, in that percentage, so that is a, a good deterrent for us.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Justin.
Rob, thank you.
Item thirty-nine will table. Item forty, discuss take action on a personal services contract with Beeline Properties LLC. Andrew, you want to take this? You want me to do it? Uh, this Beeline Properties L- LLC is the, uh, uh, surface landman that we're using, uh, as, uh, Sean O'Neill passed away about two weeks ago. And Hugh Gaston is the, uh, is the landman that we're using now to finish up the, uh, radio, uh, antenna locations. So, this is just a, a, uh, personal services contract. I think, uh, Russell had looked at this before, or it's in the same form as we, as we provides the, uh, Sean O'Neill. Russell, you got any comments?
Um, no, I did, uh, leave a discussion with Andrew, and this is something we can proceed with.
Okay. I'd make the motion that we, um, that we approve the personal services contract with Beeline Properties LLC.
Robin, I have a question before we, we, we do a second.
Go ahead.
Will this, uh, will Beeline also be taking care of our right-of-way issues that we're, as we work on some of these roads?
Oh, I forgot. Yes, one twenty is, we're also working one twenty with him as well.
Okay, that'll work. I'll second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Item forty-one, discuss take action on funding agreement for Midland County Housing Authority.
Uh, Judge, that's me. Um, this is one of the, uh, annual, uh, funding agreements we're doing with, uh, nonprofit organizations. Um, this follows aim from as the others we've done.
I'll make a motion that we approve the funding agreement for the Midland County Housing Authority.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item forty-two, discuss and take action on funding agreement for Dream Center for Orphans.
Uh, this is one I bought-
Go ahead.
Russell has finished the paperwork on it, and, uh, uh, they're very appreciative of the help that we're, we're offering. I'll make a motion that we approve the funding agreement for Dream Center, Basin Dream Center for Orphans.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item forty-three, discuss take action on agreement with Midland Humane Coalition for operation of spay and neuter voucher program.
Judge, this is, this is similar to the, of the last two, but you, we started, uh, contracting with the Humane Coalition to operate our voucher program. Um, over the past couple of years, we've accidentally had a couple different ones of contracts signed, and so, we're trying to get that cleaned up for, uh, by having the correct, uh, contract. And then along with that, uh, I think a couple issues have arisen. Uh, the first of which has to do with, uh, who payment can be made to on this agreement. Agreement specifically, uh, spells out, uh, payments to uh, veterinary, I believe it says veterinary offices. But the question has come up about, do we want to allow, uh, uh, nonprofit organizations that are holding uh, spay and neuter clinics to submit vouchers for payment? And, um, and then another issue that has come up, and I don't, I don't have any, uh, any recommendation, but a question has come up about whether, uh, the vouchers should be allowed for feral cats in the county. I think there's been some suggestion that perhaps feral cats in the county as opposed to, uh, uh, to the wild dogs is not a problem, but, uh, anybody that wants to speak to that, I'll just leave it up to them. Um, so the agreement is ready, is ready for approval, except that we do need the, for the court to decide how to handle those two issues and, and possible others.
Well, a couple of things in here. Um, we do have one, uh, five oh one C three that is, is, uh, progressing to do only spay and, and, uh, neutering. And they do it, it's Fix West Texas is what they call it. And, uh, we, we have a problem with this because they signed up as a vendor for the county, but we do not have an MOU as far as the vouchers are concerned. So, we've got a little problem in that. I, uh, originally, this thing was set up because the Humane Coalition, uh, was the primary, um, primary contact spot for the county to get spay and neuter vouchers. Uh, primarily because of the, uh, the organization that they have at, uh, PetSmart. Um, there, there's several different, um, legal aspects to paying anybody but the, uh, providers on this. And one of the things is that all of these vouchers need a, uh, approval by someone that the person is a radi, is a resident of the county. And that's a, that was why we were using the Hu- Humane Coalition. Now, we've got some other vendors that, um, are picking up the torch on that, and I kind of, uh, I want to maintain the, the, uh, our position with the Humane Coalition. But I'm, I'm also asking for direction, um, with the other deals. I think there, I think, uh, there was another, um, there were several uh, vouchers that were, were, uh, sent in directly to the county to be paid. And I, I'm not certain how, how we want to do that, if we want to promote, um, promote additional, uh, spay and neuter, uh, whether we shouldn't pay the, the vet clinics that submit them. Uh, as long as they're submitting them with proof of, uh, residence in the county. So, that's a, that's a question. Uh, as far as the feral cats are concerned, um, we don't have anybody that can claim those vouchers for feral cats. And it, it kind of does, I'm, I'm kind of questioning because, um, we have limited resources for that, and I don't know, Veronica, did you see my, my text?
I did not.
What I was looking for was how much we expended last year, uh, on our voucher program. Sorry about that.
No, no problem, but that information is actually not available currently, because our New World system is getting upgraded and I can't get to that. But I know, um, we have Luanne from the Midland Humane Coalition on this call with us. I know she's kind of evaluated how much we've spent so far and, um, where we are. Luanne, you want to add anything to?
Yeah, I, I did an unofficial tabulation of it. And of course, this year, the numbers are down because of COVID and, and, and the clinics did close down for several months. But, um, it, the amount that has been allotted towards the program has been, what, a hundred and twenty thousand a year? Right now, and including- Right now, and including if we included Fix West Texas, we would be about fifty five thousand um uh towards a voucher program. So you know, we're still pretty good uh on the numbers. Um, I I at first I was concerned about the numbers, and that's why I recommended, well, if we're, you know, reaching our hundred and twenty thousand, maybe we'll want to exclude the feral cats. But um, I think um i- if we could still continue including feral cats because the cat population, you know, is i- is a problem. Um, it's more of a problem within the city limits that people complained about feral cats, but um um if we wanted to leave that in as an option, we can continue doing that. Um, one of the things I did notice was Fix Tech West Texas has set up a loc site location for their clinic. If we wanted to um to alter the agreement to include clinics, we could, I I you know, as long as, I mean, to perform the spay neuters, you have to have a licensed veterinarian. Uh, that's all there is to it. A licensed veterinarian has to perform the rabies shots, which is required by the county. And and it has to be a licensed veterinarian to um to perform any of the services that are required by these county vouchers. So um I I think um as long as Fix Fix West Texas um documents that they have a licensed vet, um, you know, that would be the one thing um that might, you know, ma- make it qualify, I guess. Uh, I um, all of the other, you know, veterinarians that have been submitting our license and what I've been doing now, I've when I kind of got this handed to me, I wasn't, uh, I was kind of taken by surprise now that I've kind of take grasped the the process. Now I'm going through and reviewing, and even if I if I have a doubt about an address, I'm actually Googling the addresses that I have it that I'm unsure about in finding the location, you know, because we do have Odessa addresses in Midland County. So I'm actually going through and and Googling and and looking on maps to see where these addresses are. Uh, somewhere in in Stanton, you know, that are still in Midland County. So um, there's been a a getting pretty thorough in all of this on on where they're located. Um, I will probably, if you want to renew this contract, I'll probably be more thorough in demanding more information from the veterinarians. You know, it does say to include the manufacturer of their microchips, and they haven't been doing that. Uh, I also think I will demand that they and and some of them doing, some of them don't include that they verified all the vaccinations. I'll probably demand that they do include all of that information as well, um, because some veterinarians include the information, some don't. Uh, and uh I I I'm going to be more precise on that information. Um, i- if you want to continue doing this, I'm I'm going to be a little more stricter um as we move forward. Um, it's just as we're n- negotiating, hammering all this out, I've just kind of waited until um we get this completed.
Luanne, we do appreciate you being thorough about that. I know, um, as you mentioned, Commissioner Donnelly, um, Fix West Texas was trying to kind of circumvent how we go about making all these payments. Um, I know now Luanne has gone through and she has verified uh what was submitted to us. Um, so what I have and part of the dilemma that I have is I have invoices from Fix West Texas for the that date back from June to September. Uh, and the amount of eight thousand two hundred and sixty dollars that still need to be paid. I know Luanne has gone through and verified to make sure that they are all good. Uh, but of course, I didn't want to make any of these payments because of the contract as it currently states does not indicate that we can do that business with the five oh one C three. It indicated that it was specifically veterinary clinics. So the court wishes to approve that. I have no problem making the payment, but um I felt the need that this needs to needed to come to court before um could make any of those payments.
I agree.
Luanne can probably verify with me, but um I think that that uh because the payment for services has to be done to a clinic or a veterinarian. Um, we we have this problem with Fix West Texas because they contract with people to come in and do the to do the uh spay and neuter.
Right.
Um, I don't really see a problem in that, but um I just want to make certain that we're legal when we make the payments. Um, you know, because I I think that we shouldn't discourage people from doing the spay and neuter, and that's that's a big problem between me and Fix West Texas because um, we have to make certain that these are for professional services and paid to a uh to a vet. And that's the way it's set up. And I don't know exactly how to to formulate this. Uh, Russell, if you could help me out, I don't know if if they, if we can pay it to uh uh Fix West Texas on behalf of a vet or uh in in fulfillment of contract services for uh the vet that that they specify when they send in the uh um, i- it's a reimbursement for for the vet that they send in to get to do the spay and neuter.
And and that was one of the attempts that we made and 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 she opposed and said it should go to Fix West Texas. In fact, three payments were made to one of their contract vets, which was fine. And then after that, she wanted it, the checks to go to her nonprofit. My concern and, you know, one of the things that Veronica and I talked about was you don't want to set a precedent for payment to go to nonprofits and other nonprofits to think that they can get vouchers. And and that that became a concern, you know, when Veronica and I were talking because that could give the wrong the wrong uh uh perception of to nonprofits that they could, you know, be um getting payments. And 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 so it's kind of a fine line there, and it it guesses she's try, she's defining herself as a clinic. You know, uh.
Well, but I think that that the way the law is written, and Russell, you might look at this, but my understanding is the way the law is written, uh, this is a a pass through the uh Humane Coalition directly to the the vet. And that's that's really the way uh it's required to be done is to pay directly to the vet. So I think that to correct the situation with Fix West Texas, we're going to have to have some uh some MOU about how this is supposed to work. Uh, because verification of of the the addresses for county residents and that kind of stuff, uh, because the city has their own, and that's uh, that's why we're we're keeping this separate. And I think that that um, you know, the, I saw some, uh, I saw Veronica that she sent us some uh invoices from um a couple of the vets and uh I was.
Was the listing with the additional bills that um I just wanted this be approved before I paid anything.
Yeah, the Bay's uh Bay's Veterinary Clinic and the Cobb Veterinary Clinic are are probably fine because that's directly to uh vets that run those clinics. Um, I I would like to get Fix West Texas paid if they've if they have uh verified uh or if Luanne can verify those were good and were good uh vouchers. But as far as as we need to get an MOU with Fix West Texas, if we're going to do that like we're doing with the Humane Coalition. But I, you know, I'm kind of um reluctant to move away from the Humane Coalition because they have, they have have done a good job in the fa- in the uh the neutering and spaying of of the animals.
Like to uh, Luanne, uh, first of all, I want to thank you for the hard work that you guys are doing. Uh, I really do appreciate. I know this is something that we just started not long ago, and you guys have been very successful. The next thing they they'd like to make a comment on is Exhibit A uh on this contract, something that already exists. I I don't understand what the confusion is. Within this Exhibit A, we talk about feral cats are not qualified for the voucher program. We talk about that they must be Midland County residents, and there has to be proof. Uh, it also says here uh that they must, the vaccinations uh are done by licensed professionals, and I don't, I I need to go back and check exactly where on here on this exhibit I saw. Uh, I believe it's number two.
Well, by law, they have to. Yeah, by law, they have to. Yeah.
Correct. And so I I'll have to agree with Commissioner Donnelly. I'd like for this to continue to go the way we've been doing it, that it goes through the uh uh through M A M H C, through the Midland uh the hu- uh Midland Humane Coalition, just for the simple fact that this is something we've already discussed. We, the the reason, there's a reason why this Exhibit A exists. I understand that Fix West Texas might, uh, maybe they didn't have a copy of this. I I would highly encourage that.
I I I've sent them two.
Perfect, perfect. And and I do want to commend Fix West Texas for the work and and that they're doing as well. But we have got to stay within the confines of what we have said need to happen. I mean, if we start changing rules, i- it's going to be very difficult for us to to get anything done. We've got an exhibit specifically states how this program works, and we need to continue uh to use this exhibit. Now, in regards to the bills that are owed to Fix West Texas, definitely, you know, we, I would agree that we need to pay them. I would say that it does need to go through a veterinarian. I mean, I I don't think we can start writing checks directly to them because that's not how this program was created. Uh, if we're going to start doing that, then it needs to be specifically stated in here if there needs to be a new item added on to Exhibit A. Uh, but for now, I I I think it needs to go to the veterinarian or to the clinic because it does refer to that in Exhibit A.
So if you if you approve the payments to Fix West Texas, um, what's to say that uh next month, next quarter, they're not going to just continue to do the same thing?
That's a good question, Commissioner. I was thinking about that. I I would say that we would pay it towards a um veterinarian, letting them know that this will be the one and only time that this will occur. If this happens again, they come back, we can just say, look, we had a meeting, we've discussed it publicly, uh, and we will no longer pay for those. Because this has been brought up this first time, um, I'd like for us just to go and pay it a- again through a veterinarian, but moving forward, if it occurs again, we will no longer do that. I for one would not approve uh of it again.
But Commissioner, I can uh I can clarify, add language to the agreement uh to clarify that. Uh, and I I think that uh, I think uh this did this in in good faith, but there was just a misunderstanding. Uh, everybody was not on the same page, and I I think that uh I think that Luanne has uh now has verified, I think she's already said that, that she has verified all of the vouchers they submitted. And so those those all did, they all meet the requirements, and I believe that in each of those cases, veterinarians have been paid. Uh, but I can think, I can issue clarification that any payment that we make uh will not bind us in the future. Also, just one very minor thing, uh, Commissioner Sanchez, the uh in Exhibit A where it which about feral cats do not qualify, that's actually new language.
Yeah.
Uh, that I that uh Luanne had stuck in there, but it sounds like, it sounds like that probably needs to come out now. Because I think uh I think we're we're saying that's uh the the feral cat, that it's okay to keep doing vouchers for feral cats. Um, but I'll uh, based on this, I'll I'll be happy to kind of change the language some more to clarify that that even though we're going to, even though the court is going to pay the uh outstanding amount for Fix West Texas, that in the future, all payments have to go to a veterinarian or veteran veteran or veterinarian uh offices.
And I just want to, thanks for doing that, Russell. I just want to be clear. Um, again, I want to thank Fix West Texas for the work that they're doing, and and it's not specifically Fix what Fix West Texas, it's any nonprofit that is out there. Uh, it's not specifically for them. It's, I'm saying this, it's a blanket thing for any nonprofit out there. I just want to make sure I make that clear.
Yeah, and I mean, and and that's, you know, my my own concern was, like I said, if you start paying the nonprofits, then you're going to have rescues coming to you. Um, and and you know, we're not asking for payment. We've got a fund set up for spay neuters i- i- separately uh that PetSmart has given us, and so we're not asking for payments as a nonprofit. And and i- it's it's going to put you in a different difficult position. And then number two, there is sufficient funds to cover the feral cats. So yeah, I'll leave that in that clause. It don't don't um, don't exclude the feral cats.
Okay, just uh, item number six now. Sorry about that, Commissioner.
Just to clarify for me, a nonprofit such as Fix West Texas could submit an invoice that they have, but it has to be from the vet, and it will be paid directly to the vet. Is that correct?
Well, there has to be an MOU between the nonprofit and Midland County before they can submit any kind of payment.
Although we're going to say that we're going to pay for it now without an MOU.
Well, these has reviewed, and this was prior to, I mean, it's up to the court whether we pay them or not. But we do not have, we have to have an MOU. We can't just say any nonprofit can submit to us. We have to have an MOU with it between the nonprofit and Midland County.
And these, do we have it? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Judge.
I was going to say, do we have an MOU with between us or anybody with Bay's? Uh, are we just reimbursing Fix West Texas as long as uh let's say we're giving them five thousand dollars for vouchers, if they can show vet invoicing to them that they have paid for five thousand, we're just, it's just a reimbursement for funds they've already advanced. And I hope that's what we do, whatever amount we're looking at, I hope there's uh and I think Luanne may have said that those vets have been paid reimbursement.
I think the agreement is between us and the Humane Coalition that they submit to it the invoices directly from the veterinary clinics.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we submit.
See, that's, okay, that's where my question was, is if, like, let's say Fix West Texas did this, but the invoices actually came from from the veterinary clinic, not Fix West Texas, would they be paid?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, that should be okay because we'd be making the uh payments directly to the veterinarians, just like in every other situation. But if they want to hold a clinic and then submit all those vouchers to the county, and we pay the veterinarian directly, that would fit within this.
So that that's a workaround for them, and and uh they're good, and or any other nonprofit uh that we just pay the vets direct, and they they just hand us the paperwork and we go on.
The main thing I do is just look to see if they're in the county, not in the city or, you know, somewhere. A- and then make sure the data that they provide is accurate, such as the microchips and the vaccinations and all. I just look over uh save that headache from you guys, and and then I send it on to the county for payment, but I just review for accuracy before it gets goes to the county to payment, and then it's.
Well, I'm I'm good with it now.
Back to the feral cats. I heard somewhere somebody was bringing them in twenty five at a time. Is that right?
There's one lady that's got brought a lot of them. Yeah, she's quite a few.
Unbelievable number. Uh, okay.
Luanne, do those feral cats get microchip too?
No, they get their ear tipped. They they get the little tip cut out of their ear to show that they've been uh, they've been uh altered. So, and then they get a rabies shot. So, you know, it does help in the way of rabies. Uh, but they are fixed as well.
I'd make the motion that we approve the agreement with the Humane Coalition for Operation of Spay and Neuter Voucher Program.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Does that include the change to add the feral cats to that contract?
That's.
Actually, to delete, uh, we're going to delete feral cats for the that language from the addendum, right?
Correct. And I, and that uh, I would amend my motion to include payment of the uh the those invoices that you presented to us.
I'm going to recall the bills, uh, Commissioner.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Well, I need anything in there about feral cats in the motion? I don't have that.
I don't think so. I I don't, I don't think that needs to be in the motion. I, I don't, I don't think that needs to be in the motion.
The original Exhibit A does, uh, does include feral cats and, and as long as we go with the original Exhibit A, it doesn't need to be changed.
Yeah, but that's in the contract. I, I make the motion that we a- approve the agreement with Midland Humane Coalition for operation of spay and neuter voucher program.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimous. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Luanne, for all of your hard work.
Okay, any, any other items you need, I'm, I'm going to the dentist otherwise. Thanks. Thank y'all, have a good one, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Goodbye, y'all.
Judge, can you recall item 12?
If I can find it, hang on. Item number 12, we're going to recall, discuss take action bill of wire transfers.
That is just so that I can go ahead and pay, um, the additional bills for, uh, Cobb Veterinary Clinic. Two invoices, one in the amount of 2,0310, one in the amount of 1,00820. Also, also Bay's Veterinary Clinic, $1,260. Uh, I do have Fix West Texas for the month of October, uh, that was submitted and reviewed by, uh, Luanne, $3,780. And then I have a Fix West Texas for $8,260. And those are, um, the months of June through September for fiscal year 2020.
Um, I'd make the motion that we pay these bills with all the others.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Um, can I ask, uh, Judge, excuse me for a moment. Uh, may I ask, uh, Veronica, deliver that, uh, Fix West Texas check to, uh, Russell? And Russell, you can write a, a letter that explains what our process is and what we're required to under law. Cause actually under law, we can't pay anybody for services of a vet unless we pay the vet. Okay?
Right.
Thanks. All right, Monica.
Good luck. Move on to item 44, discuss take action on public nuisance abatement action.
Judge, I think, uh, well, the DA is supposed to be on here for this, um, but I don't see her. We can, um, if you guys want, we can wait till Friday. This just has to do with the abatement process of the environmental unit, um, in regards to them actually, um, can I say this? Getting people to voluntary clean up areas within the county that, uh, that have become a nuisance. There's been some dates that have already been, that have already passed and some of these folks are still there. We still haven't been able to take action. And that's what this item is about. Uh, the DA is supposed to explain to us how this works, anything that we need to approve as a court. Uh, again, I don't see her on here. Uh, we can reschedule this and, and put it back on Friday if you guys would like. Or we can call her, one of the two.
That'll be fine. Either way, uh, this is just so that we can take action and assess fines and fees and go ahead and clean up, uh, on someone else's behalf. That's correct, isn't it?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I feel like we ought to just move forward with it, uh.
It's an action, I, uh, we've got, I think we know the situation, so.
Well, if that's the case, then I'll go ahead and make that motion that we approve, uh, public nuisance abatement actions.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. I have the table, item 46, take action on submitted applications for permits to use county right of way for utility and line installations, driveway construction. Construction.
I'm going to say precinct one has zero. Precinct two has one.
Precinct three has zero.
Precinct four has zero. And Judge, I think you mentioned 46, but you went to table 45, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, table 45, I'm sorry.
Okay, and, and therefore I'll make a motion to, to approve the, uh, uh, permits that have been nominated just now.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimous. Is there any other action, any other business?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Meeting is now adjourned, it's 1:09, thank you, everybody.